We're ready to roll. I have to get my third commissioner back up here. It's four thirty, we'll call the meeting into order, please. For public information to copy, the Open Meetings Act is posted on the east wall of the Commissioner's Room. If anybody's interested. Roll call, please.
Meyer?
Here.
Harris? Knapper?
Here.
Reisig?
Here.
Blue?
Harris and Blue were excused from the meeting tonight. We all rise with the pledge of allegiance. Is there any modifications or changes to the agenda? Kelly, do you have anything?
I don't have anything.
Board, do you have anything? Entertaining motion for approval?
I think motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second? I will second. Record your votes.
Okay to close?
What?
Is it okay to close?
Close. Motion passes. Board does reserve the right to enter into executive session anytime that we feel it's necessary. I don't believe we have anything this evening, as of yet. Move on to the consent agenda, anybody would like to remove anything from the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval as submitted.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda as submitted.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? If not, record your votes. Well, in favor of it, I need a motion to move into Board of Equalization?
Make a motion to move into Board of Equalization.
Is there a second? I'll second. Any discussion? Record your votes, please.
One moment, please. Okay.
Three to oh. The only item on Board of Tax, Board of Equalization is the...
Charlie didn't have his vote in, I'm sorry, I'm gonna close the vote. Charlie hadn't recorded his vote yet.
Sorry.
I wouldn't know that unless you tell me that, but go ahead.
I'm trying to tell you that right now.
Did you record your vote, Charlie? Thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay. First item, and only item, is to receive the taxless corrections. I have a motion to receive the taxless corrections, please.
I'll move to receive the taxless corrections.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Are we all right to vote now?
Yep.
Record your votes, please.
Three yeses?
And need a motion to come out of Board of Equalization?
I'll make a motion to come out of Board of Equalization.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Okay.
Record your votes. Okay, move on to Road and Bridge.
And we have three yeses?
Thank you. Mr. Baird, you're up.
All right. This has been a long time coming, here's County Road Five Bridge, so we finally got it out for bid. We did the three weeks, once a week bidding, and Baker and Associates also sent it out to contractors that they had. I believe there was eight individual contractors out this way. Local contractors they sent it out to, and there was quite a few back east, so. I just hand it out to you tonight. This was the engineer's estimate for what the project would cost. It's sitting right up there if I can get it up there to you. I did not include that in your packet, I didn't know if you wanted it or not, but I was told that maybe you should have it, so here you go. The engineer's estimate was five hundred ninety-five thousand, six hundred thirty-two dollars to do the bridge. As you've seen in our bids, in the three bids that we received, we received one from Paul Reed. An amount of six fourteen, four sixty-four and twenty-two cents. One from Slep Paving for five seventy-nine, five hundred seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred twenty-one dollars and thirty-five cents. And one from Eric Riker, Insulation and Construction, for four hundred sixty-five thousand, three hundred fifty-seven dollars and ninety cents. So we opened these last Thursday in Kelly's office. Each, each company had an individual on hand for the bid opening to record those amounts. So at this point, I guess we're questioning, will we get an approval to move forward with Eric Riker, Insulation and Construction? As the contractor for the project. An amount of the four hundred sixty-five thousand, three hundred fifty-seven dollars and ninety cents.
Which, which was the end of the engineer's estimate, was it a little over a hundred thousand?
That's gonna be about a hundred and, a hundred and thirty thousand, it looks like, close to a hundred and thirty thousand, lower than the engineer's estimate.
Now, did you get a, did you guys put out a bid for pre-cast and for cast in place, or cast in place, or?
Cast in place.
You didn't do the pre-cast, I...
Do you wanna come up and just give your name and address, please? Nice to see you.
Yeah, Barry Swanson with Baker and Associates, responsibility.
Been seeing you forever.
Yeah.
It's been a while. So, if you have any questions for Barry?
My only question, I didn't know if they put out two bids, 'cause I see Panhandle Concrete didn't put a load in, so I...
No, it's cast in place.
Well, I don't have a problem with that at all, I guess, it's under the estimate, it's, I guess it's as flat as me. I'd make a motion to go ahead and approve that bid with Riker Construction.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second on the motion?
I will second.
We have a second on the motion to go with Eric Riker Construction? Any discussion? If not, record your vote, please.
I do have one more question.
Well, hang on.
Well, I can ask you one.
I can hold off on closing if you want to.
Let's, let's, let's hang on, let's...
What is the start date on that, Barry?
Jack had told me they were thinking September.
It started in September. Who is that?
Jack, Baker.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the year from last week, so I think it's September.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion or questions?
I need your vote.
Well, I didn't vote yet, 'cause I thought we were still in discussion. All right, any other discussion? Record your votes, please.
Okay to close?
Yes.
And you have three yeses?
Thank you.
Very good, thank you so much. Okay, under General Agenda Items, discuss Consider the Increase in the Current Contract with the Regional West Medical Center for the Public Health Nursing Hours. Paulette, how are you?
Good, how are you doing this evening?
Good.
So I have before you, it's the contract, ongoing contract that we've had with Regional West for the Public Health Nursing Hours. I was just reviewing the history, and we've had this in place since nineteen seventy-eight, so it's been a good partnership for a very long time. What we're asking is, five years ago was the last time we reviewed this, and we're asking for a ten percent increase to move forward with the same amount of hours of the four thousand three hundred and twenty-eight person hours. That's an increase of twenty thousand dollars, five hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Paulette, are they, they're obviously not the same nurses.
Right. What it equals to is, so we use different nurses for whatever we need to.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was thinking about a nine percent decrease or a rebate.
Really?
Yeah, it was.
Well, you get a pretty good deal, you know, considering you don't have to pay the cost of living, maybe, I don't know, how many cost of living raises you've had in five years, but hopefully we're worth it for good.
Charlie, you have any comments? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the renewal of the contract, Regional West Medical Center. We'll just need one. I'll make the motion, I need a second.
I'll second.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Open up for discussions. Hearing no discussion, record your votes, please.
Okay to close?
Yes.
We have three yeses?
Thank you. Thank you, Paulette.
Thank you.
Next item to discuss, Consider the Transfer Funds from Capital Improvement to Marketing to Cover the Initial USA Gravel National Championships. Brenda?
All right.
All right.
So according to the Nebraska Visitors Act, we are allowed to transfer funds from Capital Improvement once a year. And the reason is, is that when the lodging tax dollars come in, we take whatever amount was collected in that month in Scottsbluff County and split it into two accounts. Now, our marketing fund is used way more than the capital improvement fund, so that one gets built up pretty good. As a matter of fact, like right now, we have three hundred thousand more dollars in that account than we do our regular marketing account. So, we would like to transfer sixty thousand dollars from Capital Improvement, and we would put it into a fund at the Oregon Trail Community Foundation, and that would be our startup fund for the USA Cycling Event. And we will pay that thirty thousand dollars back, because by putting it at the Oregon Trail Community Foundation, we have the opportunity, under their 501(c)(3), to use it for fundraising opportunity. And so I have some potential sources here, community sources, that we could ask for money. But the one that we do know for sure is that the city of Gearing will provide tons of in-kind services to us. And USA Cycling then reimburses us for those, those amounts. And then the second one that we know for sure is our potential to sell expo spaces. We'll have a hundred and thirty ten by ten spaces, selling for five hundred dollars each, so that's sixty-five thousand dollars annually. So, you know, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars will pay for the event for two years, it'll pay back the Capital Improvement Fund. And then what we would like to do then, at the end of the two years, is use whatever remaining funds that are left at Oregon Trail Community Foundation to set up a fund to start the Scottsbluff Gearing Sports Council. And I brought Aaron tonight, if anybody has any questions. He's in charge of a lot of the sponsorships and the expo spaces, so he can talk a little bit about that income if you need him to, if you have additional questions.
That's money that we've already collected, we're just moving it from one fund to another fund, basically. So we're not asking for anything more.
Nope.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to move that money, actually.
Okay. We have, we have, we have a motion to move the money into, from capital into promotional?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, just curious, the, so, so then the money that we're reimbursed, or the money that we make off the expo will go back into the Oregon Trail Community Foundation, which is our, which is carved out, we have that carved out there, so it's still ours.
Yes.
And we would use that money to help start the Scottsbluff Gearing Sports Council.
To help start it, yes.
But that's still two years away, right?
Right.
Are we...
No, we'll start it ahead of that.
We'll start it, we'll start it.
We'll start it ahead of that, but, but what that technically means is that would be more money for us to bid other events, and we're not bidding anything for a couple more years. Over my dead body, right? So, yeah, so we're gonna save that until, yeah, until we're ready to bid other things, and then it would be there already.
Okay, I see.
Mm-hmm.
Sounds good to me.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, please record your votes.
Okay to close?
Yes.
And you have three yeses?
Thank you. Thank you, Brenda, I think you're still up.
Yep, I am, I guess, yeah. Okay, so the Tourism Advisory Board is seeking a new advisory member, and we had a position open for someone in Attractions. And we were blessed to receive an application from Tina Worthman. She is the new Executive Director at the Midwest Theater, and she has a wonderful resume, she has so much experience in tourism. She just got right in on the conversation the other day, and, and, and she will be a huge asset to our committee. The advisory committee asked me to come forward and get your, they give you their recommendation to bring her on board as our, a member, and then I would like to invite her, just to say a few words about herself, just for those of you who don't know her.
Hello, I'm Tina Worthman, I'm, I'm actually a native of Gearing, so I moved back. And I've been the Executive Director at the Midwest Theater for the past three months. We've been pretty busy for the past three months, lots of activities going on, so. In my experience with tourism, I'm excited to, if this works out, that, to lend my expertise and enthusiasm, basically, to Scottsbluff County and see the great things that we're doing, and how I can be part of it, and all the other excitement that's brewing. Because if you have any questions.
What'd you do before the Midwest?
I actually was the Director of the Cheyenne Botanic Gardens in Cheyenne, and I have experience in marketing and PR with the state of Wyoming before that.
She's done a phenomenal job with the Midwest in the three months that she's been there. I can say from experience.
Thank you.
Well, I, I kinda know her, too. We, we have a little bit of a connection. He's only about that tall, but he's still a connection. Okay?
Well, I would move approval for the appointment of Tina Worthman to the Tourism Advisory Board.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, record your votes, please. All you need's two, Tina.
Okay to close?
Close, please.
And you have three yeses?
Okay, thank you. That wasn't so tough, was it, Tina? You were worried. Very good, welcome, welcome, you're gonna do a good job. It's a good board, it's a good board. Great group to work with. They're doing, they're doing some phenomenal things out here, they really, really are.
I'm a little collaborative myself.
You have, you have your work cut out for you, trust me. If you can get along, if you can get along with Brenda, you're gonna be fine. Yeah, you're gonna do okay. Okay. Next item is discussed, Consider Approval of Clear On-Demand Pay Program for County Employees.
Commissioners, you're way further ahead on the agenda than I ever anticipated you would be. So, we asked him to join between five and five fifteen.
Well, we can, we can go back if we're still...
Could you do that?
If we're still here.
Cause I know Ryan's here, and he kinda wanted to get moving, can you do the Keno update?
Uh, what do we got next here?
The airport discussion, or the last thing is Keno?
Okay, is it all right, if we move Ryan, if we move Ryan up? He's here, and then he can...
He can go home early.
Go home, go home, make some burgers. Ryan, go ahead.
Good, and you?
Good.
Ryan Keller on Aspen Street in Gearing, Nebraska.
So, of course, for you to hear the Keno activity, did I give you the...
No, no. Thank you very much. If you did, it's on my desk. If they say it's okay. Can you start, you wanna wait for Charlie?
Let's, let's hang on for just a minute. It'd be nice if we had a full board. But I want him to be able to hear everything.
I guess I can tell you about the documents I just handed you. I've handed just this information in the past, I just updated it. And Brian just gave me the, Brian, not Brian, just gave me the March information, and they had Keno gross revenue of five hundred twenty-eight thousand. And wins paid out, three hundred sixty-six thousand. So, anyway, you can read it across, and my second page has activity per location, per Keno location, how much was, how many Keno...
What do you say, Keno rights, Keno?
Locations, that's what I'm...
Yeah, okay. Anyway, the information by, by, by location, and then my last page is what Ryan and his accountant present every month. Kinda just the standing of Keno, I don't know if I've given you copies of this before. But, anyway, he, he had a really good month. We had enough to pay him his fourteen percent plus, make up some of the amounts in arrears. Yeah.
River View's starting to come up a little bit, isn't it?
Uh, no, they actually do not have a Keno right now. We, we can't get, we want everything to be on the Optima system, so all the numbers are drawn from the front side, so that the players can take tickets to any location. And where they're at, we haven't been able to get internet with the static IP address, which is something we require. I'm hoping, I looked into a Starlink system, that turned out to be a little pricey, they wanted five hundred dollars a month.
Don't work through the phone lines either, huh?
I, I should've restated it, River View is becoming busier, their business is growing and becoming busier.
Yeah.
That's, that's how I should've said, I'm sorry.
But it is one of our locations.
Currently not, they do have a Keno license, though.
They have a Keno license.
Yeah, I, I see it on, I see it on the list here.
In worst-case scenario, we could go back to an older system. It just, it kinda makes things complicated for both, and then players, they don't understand that that's the one place that you can't do it at, so it causes a lot of confusion between players and owners.
Okay. Okay, I think you're ready to go.
And during our last meeting, or during the renewals of the leases, we had talked about any improvements that we were gonna make to the building that we needed to make sure we got permission first. So we plan on closing down one day at the end of this month, we're not sure when. And we are going to paint, we've got some drywall to do, some electrical work, we're gonna add some lights and things like that. I just wanted to make sure it's all gonna be okay with you guys.
Some of those things you've got to, you've got to do.
Yep.
And not have people in there while you're, while you're doing it.
We're, we are gonna keep, I'm gonna put what's called a random number generator on the Keno side, so that all the locations will still be able to play Keno, we just won't have it there for now one day. But Keno will still run in Scottsbluff County.
So they can go somewhere else and play it.
They can go somewhere else and play it.
They just have to play today.
They do.
Yeah. Okay. Well, it looks like things are going well, Ryan.
Yeah, it has been.
Are you having any issues that we need to know about?
Nothing major, you know, we, we were having a hard time with help for a while, trying to find help. But I went on the, somebody recommended Indeed. So I tried that out, and we had a really great...
Where did you try?
It's called Indeed, it's a website you go to.
Mm-hmm, we use it all the time.
And it was...
It's a website, yeah.
Really well, it wasn't cheap, but it worked really well. And we did get, hired three new people out of that.
Really?
And that's really helped out a lot. And we have twenty-four resumes on file now.
And that was at the, at the main parlor?
On the Keno side, yeah.
Yeah.
All the individual locations, like Reds and Rustic hire their own people.
Correct. We do offer training, and they, if they hire new ones, they bring them into the front side and we train for a few hours with them. And then they go back to their locations.
I know on the, on the restaurant side, I'm hearing so many good things about the food.
Good.
People that have not really eaten there before, that are going, not so much to play Keno, but just to go and eat.
Pulling those twenty skill games out of there was a blessing.
Yeah.
Anyways, changed a lot of things over there for the...
You know, before it was always just go and play Keno, maybe get something to eat, but now it's actually go and get something to eat.
Yeah, and they stick around.
And they stick around, yeah.
Watch games, yeah, it's been...
Yeah, the food has been phenomenal, that's, congratulations to whoever's cooking it, they're doing a great job.
They do a great job, I mean, I'll take that.
But hopefully he's gonna paint the black ceilings lighter, is that what you were gonna do?
No, I don't...
No, you're not doing that.
That's that foam, it's dyed black, so I don't know how we would be, if we could spray that or not. Um, I know it does have some kind of anti-flammable material part of it, so I don't even know if you could cover that up or not, I'm not sure with the...
Should put in a different lights, you were doing something to light it up in there.
Yeah, we're putting, yeah, we're putting in drop lights in that back room where it's kinda dark right now. There's a ceiling, when the roof leaked, it damaged the drywall, so we're replacing that. And then I think we're painting the whole, we're gonna try to paint the whole thing. We're gonna start in the main Keno side and the bathrooms, because of the worst...
So do you have some help doing that, are you hiring some contractors to do?
Yeah, hiring.
Yeah.
A, a lot of the employees, they'll still be able to come in and they'll be able to help, so they'll flock in and they'll help. Things like that, we got some carpet we need to tear out in a couple of the storage rooms.
Good, very good. Sounds good. Again, thank you for all your hard work over there, it's, it's...
Thank you.
The numbers are showing, it is paying off for us, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Buddy, have any questions, Ryan?
No, it looks like you're doing well, and I hope you're doing well.
Yeah, it's been busy.
As long as we can stay ordered up, it works well.
Getting some people hired is definitely helping, so.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, Lisa, we're back to the Discuss and Consider the Resolution regarding, regarding, regarding the airport insurance.
Okay, I'll see if this, if the man was on or had responded to me, and he did not, okay. And if he's not here by the time we're ready to finish the presentation, we'll just...
Was he coming?
No, it's WebEx.
Okay.
It's a WebEx, like, it's like, you know, you don't want him sitting there waiting for thirty minutes, or you try to estimate a time, and I was way off. I just was gonna...
Generally, you know, we're about quarter after before anything happens.
This is just a copy of the resolution. I've been work, as you know... I've been working with Kyle Long on this project. And we're not talking of totally taking away insurance, but just if we would rescind this resolution, the concerning statement is, now therefore be a resolve, the county seeks to clarify that the county shall remain responsible for and continue to assume responsibility for insurance coverage for all buildings, excluding contents situated at the West Nebraska Regional Airport Facility. This was put in writing November twenty-first, two thousand and five. And as we are reading the statutes and such, we just don't understand why we, why the county was put in this situation to be responsible for. So, this is what we're, I don't have the latest yet to rescind it, and that's, that's what I'm seeking approval to move to that point. I was hoping to have that with me, but, and I haven't found any other resolutions that state any of, any, how our responsibility was tied to whether they have a bond. I have, nobody's presented that, I can't find it in the clerk's records, I've asked Kelly to look to, so. Mr. Ostig is aware, so he's been, he knew we were coming to this meeting to ask for this well over a week ago. Nobody's said, don't be doing that, and this is why you can't.
Yeah, I think, you know, and one of the things that you and I discussed, Lisa, a couple of occasions, is, is the fact that we, they are our buildings, and we need to make sure that there's insurance on them, whether we pay for it or somebody else, but the, the, the other thing I think people need to be made aware of is that we, we are the only ones that take care of the insurance on airport authority buildings, nobody else does that.
The only county in Nebraska.
The only county in Nebraska that does that. And...
And Nerman normally does not cover the airport authorities, and that was our, that's some of our concern, that's not only...
Yeah.
Thought on this, because we had to make sure they're taken care of, but we are also being warned that this year, securing property insurance for any entity, whether it be counties, governments, private, is gonna be rough. Nerman is warning us, we could well double, last year we paid a hundred and seventy-three thousand, no, yeah, we did, a hundred and seventy-three thousand to cover all our buildings plus the airport, that could double this year.
Wow.
So, and it's because of all the claims, and you know, and there's just catastrophic things happening everywhere. And the airport's been hit more than once with very damaging wind and hail, so. Thoughts?
Well, I, I mean, there are, there are several issues out there and we, we've discussed dealing with those issues. And my suggestion is that we, we take baby steps with it for, for right now. This would be baby step number one. Is, is to get that taken care of and then look into the other, the other concerns that we have. Uh, and uh, get it, get it cleaned up. Maybe that's not the term, not cleaned up, but
Make some adjustments.
Make some adjustments so that everybody's on the, on the same page and
We're doing the best for both enti, both entities.
Right.
That's what we have to do.
Right.
Yeah, that's what we gotta look, look at. We're looking out for ourselves, they're looking out for them.
Exactly.
And what's the best, you know, what, what's, what in twenty twenty-three is the best option for us compared to two thousand five? Might have been a whole different ball of rocks.
Well, I think so, and I think it was. I think back, back then, uh, the, the airport wasn't what it is today, obviously. Uh, the expansion wasn't, wasn't what it is today.
I think I've told you before, the value of their buildings is thirty-five million.
Yeah.
So, I don't know the value of the detention center right now, but it's our highest dollar one, but I think this building's pretty high and next door, so. I should have brought that information. Anyway, thank you for working with me on this and we'll have something
Well, we appreciate your work on it. You've been pretty diligent about trying to come to a solution on this thing.
Well, I talked to Lisa, it was Friday when I was with you, I even said, you know, if we have to do a pass through or something where we keep those, keep them in state of, you know, our insurance and they start paying through us, but it's
And, and that's not a bad solution. And, and at first when I heard, I thought, well, there, that's, that's a good solution. Except it doesn't do anything for our, for our risk, as far as Nirmen is concerned, because they're still on our policy.
I don't think they're gonna lower, I talked to Lisa, you know, they haven't really gave us anything back.
Yeah, that's, that's the other concern.
They have not ever gave us anything that they're actually, they said that they were gonna lower some rates. I'd like to see where the rubber meets the road before we go jump
Yeah.
switch horses and then have them raise the airport way up and then, you know.
Well, the air, yeah, the airport, the airport cannot get it through Nirmen anyway. They're gonna have to, they're gonna have to go shopping someplace else for it. But if we can get our risk lowered considerably, then that's a win-win for, win-win for everybody then.
Yeah, um, and I did ask for a what-if scenario and that was not easy to obtain, so.
So we're still, we're still, we're still waiting on it. Okay, maybe when we get that information, then we can
That would be a better
We can dig in a little deeper.
Is your, is your thing here?
It looks like he's here.
I've, I've got more questions, but maybe we can come back to this after he's done?
Well, we told him five fifteen, so if you wanna address it now or do you wanna wait until
Yeah, I guess my question is, you know, the, the comment was made that we need to make sure the buildings are insured because those are our buildings.
Correct.
So where is, and there's, and there's rental coming off of these, some of these properties that is going to the airport authority?
Right.
So do, do we, do we just need to sell our properties to the airport authority? Would that be the appropriate thing to do?
I think we need to keep it in the county, uh, or at least we should at least get to get an opinion on that before we
Yeah, 'cause if your airport authority dissolves or they're, we decide we don't need that anymore, then it all comes back here. And along with the opportunity to have rental re- revenue coming this way rather than all to them. As we know, that's been something we've really questioned.
So in all the, in all of these others, you made the comment, somebody made the comment that other counties are not insuring airport authority buildings or property. So how are the other, how are the, do the other counties all, still own their
I think, I think if it's a county airport, they do.
Possibly, but not all.
If, if, but if it's an authority and it's, they're on their own, I, yeah, I think we're, they claim we're the only one in the state that do insure.
Well, I think, I think the comment being that no other county or Nirmen doesn't insure any other airport authorities. I would assume that the county owns the buildings and, and the airport authority ensures their own buildings. Otherwise, they wouldn't have anything to do with it. If the airport authority owned the building, then they would insure their own one.
Fact remains, we still own those buildings, I do believe.
Exactly.
And so they are our buildings.
And I think there's some
We gave them all the income.
I think there's some that are independent and I, um, as I understand
It's, it's, it's possible, yeah.
That's true.
That York, the city owns, is, is tied in with the airport authority, not the county.
Yeah.
So, you know, not everybody's
And just, I'm just kind of reading into their comment that there, no other ones are, are being insured by, by Nirmen. Well, if they're not being insured then, then if they either own it themselves or the county owns it and, 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 but the airport authority is insuring their own, their own property or, or the county's property. So that might be something that we'd have to find out, I suppose.
At some point, we probably ought to have a joint meeting with the airport board and the commissioner.
So, yeah, I think that's probably where we need, need to go, but my other question is, um the improvements in the buildings that have, um, been approved or, or just raised up from, from the, from the ground up? Um, are those county buildings also? If the, if the airport authority built something brand new and we are insuring it, are we insuring it because it's, they built a property for us?
Well, a good example would be the new fire station. The fire station belongs to the, belongs to the county. They paid for it, but it's our building.
It's on our, my
Those two new hangers, they built those two big hangers, they're, they're on our property, they're right on the
It's my understanding that that, that all belongs to us.
That's where it all gets pretty gray.
Yeah, that's, and that's what we need, that's what we need to get straightened out.
Is it, I, well, now, that might need to, I, I know Schiff's built a hangar out there, does Schiff's own it? Or did they just build it and donate it to the airport? Who owns it?
Good question.
We, you know, we've never had that defined to us, who's insuring it?
And all those buildings on the property do not have to pay property tax.
So they're privately owned, they're privately insured, they should pay in property tax, shouldn't they?
But they're on coun- county land, so therefore they don't tax them. That's how I've been, that's how I was talking to you about, there's two, there's a couple of FedEx buildings out there.
Right.
And there's the FedEx Ground. And then there's the one on air, in, within the airport confines, that's what Fed- FedEx Air, FedEx whatever.
Yeah.
That one is not charged property tax, it's charged personal property tax, but not tax on the building. But the FedEx Ground outside the fence is taxed. It's not a
The building should be, the building should be paying property, or should be paying a personal tax on the building, 'cause that's personal property.
And that's not on county property.
It is on county property.
It's on county property, but the building itself should be paying property tax.
It should be paying a, some sort of tax, whether it's personal or whatever you call it.
We're talking about the, the one outside the fence.
The one outside the fence does pay, the one inside she's talking about doesn't.
Doesn't pay ta, it pays personal for, tell me, personal property taxes like your copiers and your equipment.
And the airplanes or whatever else they store. Okay, I, I, I think we need a clarification on this. This is, this has been so loose for so many, I don't mean, loose. It has been so undefined, I guess, for, for, for quite a while. We probably need to get it all figured out.
Good understanding. So you are recommending we try to do a, just two commissioners go and have a gr- meeting with
Yeah, I think so.
Or do you wanna do that? Or you wanna invite them here or?
I think we ought to invite them here and let the commissioners talk, 'cause I know usually, you know, uh, Mr. Harris has a lot of good questions, Kenny has a lot of good questions.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm okay, well, I'm okay with that.
Why don't we invite them to
Invite them here, have a, have a representation with their attorney to be here and then we can have our, our counsel there also.
Okay.
That sounds good.
Are you guys gonna want a special meeting with, uh, just a joint between you and them, or do you want it part of a regular meeting?
We can, this sounds like something we might wanna do as a work session possibly. But we can, we can take action. We can set it up and even take action at it if necessary.
Just looking at the calendar. Okay.
Not that we would take any action, but
Yeah, maybe, maybe May eight. Or an off, an off Monday or something, see if we can work that out, or, you know, they meet once a month, maybe they'll want
They meet, they meet in the mornings.
They'll meet, uh, this Wednesday, I've got that meeting.
You have that meeting?
Yeah.
All right.
But I mean, that's gonna give us some time to pull what we have and they can get what they have and try to, try to ask the questions to get everything figured out. 'Cause I know Steve had had questions as far as maintenance on roads and some other things, that, that needs to be sorted out also.
I think that's pretty well been straightened out. I think Steve's pretty much told him what he can do and can't do out there. I mean, I, I, we've just been doing it, I believe, back in over years.
Yeah.
You know, they want us to obviously keep doing it, so.
And, and we wanna cooperate, we wanna do things.
Save on insurance.
Sure.
And that's a factor that we keep doing, so.
Wait. All right, all right, thank you for discussing that with me.
Okay, thank you much.
Okay.
Okay, uh, so now we'll jump back to, uh, lost it here.
Claire on Demand.
Lance, are you there?
Here.
Oh, it's like he's coming up. Okay, I just, I wanna put this in front of you, this really isn't a decision kind of thing, but through our Time Clock program there's, there's a little, our employees can click on this tab that's called Claire. And basically, it's a, it's a payroll pro- program where, you know, we pay at the end of the month but by utilizing their program, which would have no implications to the co- county, no interest, no fees to us or the person, that people could get into their, or would be able to get like an advance on their payroll through them. If a person would quit early, then we do not have to go look them up. That's up to Lance and his team to go and recuperate, but I wanted him to kind of show you a little bit about what the app looks like and let you know that I think this might be a good resolution, 'cause we have like twelve more people to try to get on payroll, direct deposit. We are really close and that, like, this might just be a good solution to help us out with the getting paid ahead of time.
Without those other twelve people, we can't move to the bi- bi-monthly payment?
I don't know if we're gonna get to bi-monthly right away, 'cause right now we are still, you know, we're waiting for an upgrade. We, we've talked about that and it's a real problem. A r- a lot of extra burden without all these things in place, without that payroll program. This is a next option.
What payroll program do we have now? I mean, what type is it?
We've told you, uh, it, it's the one put on by Naco, Naco Owens MIPS.
Yes.
And MIPS operates the software that's used by the treasurer, used by the assessor, used by the deeds. And clerk ties into that too. They've upgraded the others, correct?
Yes.
This one's the last one to be upgraded. They're the, working on the payroll accounts payable is one package. And anyway, there's, there's a lot of things to fine tune and they're working on that and it was expressed to me by Kelly and by Heather especially that we want to keep the continu- nudity amongst the departments if we wait for this, so. Anyway, well, let's, if, if you just listened to what Lance's program is about, I meant to invite more employees, didn't get that done, but anyway. Charlotte and I and Kim listened and we were, like I said, it was more than I expected, so. Anyway, can you, can you hear us talking or hear me?
Can you turn him up?
Yeah, I can, I can hear you guys, can you hear me?
Can you turn up the volume a little?
Can we, can we turn up the volume now?
Is that personal? You know
He's, we're gonna try, so, I didn't think about the remote. Oh.
Hello?
Okay, try now.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you, yeah, it needs to go a little bit higher.
It's gotta go higher now, yeah.
Try now, Lance.
Hello? Hello?
Yeah, it's not too bad.
Can you hear us all right, Lance?
Yeah, I can hear you all perfectly.
Okay.
Yeah, that's better.
All right, go ahead, Lance.
All right. All right, well, thank you very much for inviting us here. I'm just going to go ahead and, uh, just share my screen, just give me one second.
It's a nice background.
One second. Thank you. I'm having trouble finding that screen. All right, can you see, um, can you see the, uh, Claire for Employers?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So try to keep this short, maybe just a couple of minutes, uh, and walk you through what Claire for Employers is, uh, that we'd like to uh, start to offer to the employees of Scotts Bluff County. So basically, this is all included within your Time Clock Plus subscription. Every TCP subscription includes, uh, free access to Claire. Uh, bit about the company, we were a top work tech vendor for twenty twenty-two. We're available over twenty thousand businesses nationwide, tens of thousands of Americans use it, including a lot of school districts and educational facilities across the country. Um, we started, we've started, uh, making a big push in the public sector space recently after seeing a big, a big need and, um, we're, we're thrilled to be able to expand from just the, from the private sector now to the public sector. Um, so for my, at least for my conversations with Lisa, so we felt that there were two problems that, uh, Claire could solve for Scotts Bluff County. One is banking services for the thirty to forty employees who still get paid via paper check. Uh, and then second, for all the other employees, as a way to improve hiring and retention by alleviating financial stress for employees. So I'll walk you through how we're able to do both of these things. Um, so basically, to give you kind of a, a high level summary, so Claire is basically a banking app that works with, uh, Time Clock Plus and any payroll system, right? So the core feature of this, of this app is that it allows employees to get free on-demand pay of up to fifty percent of their gross wages earned. That means that whatever hours they log into Time Clock Plus, we as Claire advance that to the employee for free, without any interest charges, anything like that. Uh, and then we collect that on, on payroll. And because it's a bank account, um, so it's a, we're partnered with an FDIC insured bank. Uh, they get the, you know, the insured, uh, save, spending and savings accounts. And then it can also be a, as I said, like a good way to encourage those who are still getting paid on paper check to open a bank account, uh, with us and allow them to get access to, uh, their pay every day, uh, as they need it. On top of these features, we also provide savings features like three percent cash back on gas and groceries. There's two percent high yield savings. And then we offer free withdrawals at forty thousand ATMs, including a couple, uh, over there at Scotts Bluff. Uh, and then we also provide financial planning and financial education tools, uh, because it's not just about giving people money. It's about, uh, ensuring that they spend and, uh, and save responsibly. Now, um, a lot of these features, especially the on-demand pay, are important for, especially for people who are living paycheck to paycheck. Uh, folks that mi- might need access to some money a couple of days before payday. What we, what this allows them to do is not have to turn to expensive sources of, of loans, like payday loans are very expensive. Uh, friends, borrowing from friends and family is, you know, can be very embarrassing. And we allow them to basically borrow from themselves, um, without any, any extra costs. Uh, maybe just a quick level on how it works and how we're able to keep it free. So they basically just sign up for Claire via their Time Clock Plus, you know, web clock. So there's no additional installation of any software required, it's already built into TCP. Uh, and then we offer them fifty percent of gross wages up to the last paycheck that they put in, so there is a direct deposit component as well. Uh, employees take the advances from Claire, they spend it from Claire. And then on payday, all the county needs to do is deposit their paycheck as normal into their new bank account. Um, and then Claire will collect it from the employee. So there's no any kind of, um, payroll intervention, there's no, we don't bill the county, we don't invoice the county. Everything is between Claire and the employee, uh, directly. The only thing that the county needs to do is help the employees in setting up their direct deposit. Um, and obviously, it's very easy for employees to access their earnings, there's no lockups. Uh, they can spend it on the, there are multiple ways to spend it, they get access to a virtual card. So they see the card number on the app and they can use it right away, right after they sign up. They have Apple Pay, Google Pay and Samsung Pay, so they can spend it in source. And then we send them their card, it takes about a week or so to get in the mail. They can also transfer the money, it's free to transfer to their savings account and that there is interest. They can transfer it to other banks for free. And then they can do an instant transfer for a small fee if they want the money same day. Uh, and then we've got, uh, forty thousand ATMs in the country that are free. And there's three in Scotts Bluff, the ones at Target, Walgreens and Loaf and Jug, those are all free. Um, and then you can also request cash back at many major retailers, like CVS, Target, uh, Walmart and so on. Um, and what's the benefit to the county? Typically, we see that Claire users pick up more shifts. So depending on, maybe if you have some employees that are still, uh, that you want incentivized to pick up more shifts, this is a great incentive to do that. Um, and then on top of that, uh, we see that those who use Claire stay at their jobs for much longer. So they end up staying about twenty-six percent longer at their job, uh, before they decide to move on to, to another one. Uh, and to date, we've advanced over ten million dollars in free advances to employees across the country. Uh, and we're, you know, excited to hopefully be able to do that with Scotts Bluff as well, uh, all without any kind of fees or anything of that sort. Uh, lastly, I just wanna emphasize, it's completely free for Scotts Bluff County, there's Uh, lastly, I just wanna emphasize, it's completely free for Scotts Bluff County. There's no fees for the county ever. We'll never send an invoice. Uh, we're never gonna collect a credit card number, anything like that, and there's no risk or liability, as Lisa said, in case employees do not pay back. Uh, and there's no change to your payroll. There's no integration, there's no setup, uh, and we also even do all the customer support. You just get them to call us and we'll take care of the rest. Um, and that's it. Um, I went pretty quickly there, just to give you an overview, but I'm happy to take any questions or go back in case there's, uh, something that wasn't clear.
I do have a quick question. Um, there were some fees associated with transfers. Can you go over that again?
Yes. Yeah, um, so it's, if you want to transfer it to another bank account, it's free if you, if you're willing to wait one to three business days. If you want the transfer like instantly, there's a one point seventy-five percent fee. It's kind of like Cash App or Venmo, if you ever use any of those apps, it's the, it's the same structure. It's free for one day, uh, and a one point seventy-five percent fee for instant.
You got transfer to debit card. Will you transfer to, transfer to a credit card as well or not?
No, you, uh, you can't really transfer to credit cards. That would, that would just be like paying the bill, I think. You can use it to pay your credit card bill if you'd like.
If, if an employee doesn't want to do it anymore, is it a hassle to stop the program?
Uh, no, um, they would just ask the HR team to, uh, switch out their direct deposit. So in the same way that to sign up, you switch in your direct deposit, uh, you can always just say, hey, I don't wanna use Claire anymore, please put my direct deposit back to my Bank of America or whatever bank account they have. So it's, uh, it's all automatic and pretty simple.
So what does it cost the employee to, uh, be a?
It's all, yeah, it's all free to the employee as well. Um, there are some fees for things, so like the, you know, there's a fee for the transfer. Uh, I said we have forty thousand free ATMs, but if you wanna use another ATM, there's a fee for that. Um, most of the way we make money is basically when employees spend on their debit card. So we give them a debit card and they go out and spend that at Target. Target will ac- will actually pay Mastercard for processing the transaction, and then Mastercard pays us. A lot of steps in the process, but basically, when they spend in the store, that's how we make money. That's why we don't need to charge employees any fees for the, for the wage advance.
So what is the advantage of the employee using you rather than one of our local banks?
Yeah, the, the big advantage is that they can get access to their earnings every day instead of waiting two weeks. Um, we actually work with a lot of local banks because most employees don't, they, they split their, their paycheck. So they say, you know, my rent, my mortgage, all my big purchases, that, that stays in my local bank, 'cause that's, that's the one that's already set up. This is more for emergencies. If I have a, an emergency expense, um, this is a good way to set it up so that you don't need to borrow money or you're, you don't fall short on your expenses.
So, so you're.
By setting this up.
So you're gonna give that employee whatever amount they asked for, whether they have in the account or not, is that correct?
Fifty percent.
Fi- up, up to fifty percent? And is there a fee for that?
No, there's no, so, so basically, an employee elects to put in a portion of their paycheck on declare. So they say every, every period, I'll put in, let's say, five hundred dollars. And so in that period, you can advance up to five hundred dollars. Um, and then on payday, you get a five hundred dollar paycheck. It will pay us back. So that's how, that's how it works.
Can you go over that fifty percent thing again? What is, what was the fifty percent?
Yeah, yeah, let me explain. So let's say an employee puts in their full paycheck on declare. Um, we, the, what we, what we allow them to do is advance fifty percent of their gross wages. So if, yeah, because we, we're not connecting to the payroll system, 'cause that would be a, a pain. Uh, so instead of trying to calculate the exact daily net wage, we just allow them to advance fifty percent of the gross earnings for the day instead. Uh, so that's the, that's, so basically, in a day, if you are, let's say you work ten hours a day and you make ten dollars an hour for simple math, and you earned a hundred dollars gross, that day you can, you can advance fifty dollars. The next day, another fifty, uh, and so on.
And they do get paid.
Have you discussed this with any employees at all, Lisa? What their feedback is on it?
Oh, I know some have been asking about it.
Have they? Okay.
'Cause it's out there on their time block, yeah.
Is there a minimum amount that need to be signed up for this?
I don't think so. He hasn't addressed that, right?
There's no minimum, uh, but if you put in ten dollars, you probably won't find too much value in the product.
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about employee participation. Is there a minimum amount?
No, there's no minimum. There's no minimum. Um, there's no minimum.
They, he doesn't, he, he's offered to come out and help people sign up, but I think they can just log on themselves and set up a program, get the particular slip that payroll needs, give it to Charlotte, and then she would.
Can we get a couple of employees?
This is Charlotte, our payroll specialist. I don't know if you've been.
I'm not sure.
So it's, it's already there. It's been there. The employees just aren't aware of it. So when we started talking about trying to go to payables, we're like, well, we can't do that yet. We're waiting on an update. What are some of the other options? Well, we started looking at this and we started direct deposit and found out there's a way employees can get an advance on their money without us taking any liability, and it's been there all along. We just haven't been aware of it.
So do they get charged interest on that advance?
No, no. Doesn't cost them anything.
He said no.
Can we get a, do a little pilot project, maybe? Get a few people and just try it and see if it would work, you know, run it for thirty days, forty-five days? See if, you know, see how, see how they get along with it. Take three or four people.
Yeah, I have to, I'll sign up for it. Yeah, I'll sign up for it. It doesn't cost me.
And you're, I mean, you, you, you look at it, you see it, and Lisa does too, uh. I, I mean, ob- obviously, we're trying to protect the employees. I don't wanna get something that, uh.
We can't protect them from themselves, you know, but, um.
Yeah, yeah. I, I.
But they still earn some money. I mean, they can't, they can't totally overextend themselves. They cut them off fifty percent, like.
Yeah. So, so the difference between this and what I'm doing at, at a local bank is that the local bank's not going to give me half my pa- paycheck in advance. But I could do everything else with this that I would do at my local bank. That's the big difference.
They're not gonna give you anything in advance. You have to have money in before they'll give you out.
They get really upset when you take out more than what you have.
Yeah.
Because it's linked to our time clock, they can see how many hours the employees actually worked. So they can say, okay, you put in eight hours, we'll give you four hours advance. So they're not gonna give me anything.
That's right.
They can see those hours going in.
Steve, how do you think your people go along with that?
I don't know. I guess it's hard to say.
Do you, would you be interested in being on a pilot project to try it to see, so you could explain to them how it works?
Yeah, I could try it.
The more, the more people get involved in it, you know, and if it don't work in forty-five days, it just nixes it.
It's, it's not something for us to be able to next. It's up to the employee to sign up for it.
You can just get off of it if you don't like it. But if it works, I mean, we could, you could recommend it to someone like that.
Yes, yes, we could. And you have to be a smart, smartphone user, which majority of our people probably are, but they're still, they would aren't.
Okay, well, I, you know, I've got no problem.
We're gonna try it out and see what it do.
Give it a try and see what happens.
Can't hurt.
Yeah.
Okay.
Tell him to come up to the better program.
Show you that, there may be solutions in there. For instance, one of the things he showed us, let's say you're standing, you're just storing your over, you brought too much up. You're twenty bucks short. You can, on your phone, you can do an instant transfer for free, get that money, that twenty buck, twenty dollar advance, and then you're not, for better lack of words, looking dumb at the register trying to open up and out of money.
Sure.
You know, you can do an instant transfer, just like, say you're transferring from your savings to your checking. You can do the same thing on Claire, but you're getting an advance on your own money.
Right, right.
It's not costing you.
Okay.
Sounds like, uh, at least there's a, you know, a way that they can get ac- access their funds.
There you go.
Uh, that, that's the main thing is, 'cause there's people waiting here for their money and I just, I don't like tying their money up.
Right, yeah.
Okay, with that, I would, I would entertain an approval, uh, entertain approval, entertain a motion to, to approve the, the pilot program.
Can we have? I don't think we have to.
Well, it's, it's already there. Well, let's just do it then.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think we have to.
I know we could have discussed and approved, I think, but it was probably.
Yeah. Okay, I'm just following.
Lance, we appreciate your time and your expertise.
Lance, thank you so much. Where, where?
Thank you so much.
Where are you calling from, Lance?
I'm in Boston, uh, but our office is in New York.
Well, you're in Boston now. We're just looking at the background there.
Oh, no, this is just my fake office.
The dream office, right?
Oh, you're, you're really in a trailer down by the river, right? Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm under the bridge. It's raining, so.
That's covered. Thank you, Lance.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I'll drop off now. Thank you, Lisa.
Appreciate it. Okay. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thanks for bringing that up, Lisa. That's, at least that's an option. I mean, that's.
Okay, well, moving on to, uh, old business. We don't have anything on the, uh, Tenth Street building at this time, yet. Move on to public comments. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to the board at this time? Move on to board and staff reports. Board, have anything? Charlie?
I, well, I'd like to ask Steve a question as far as the bridge on, uh, Carter Canyon. Do you know, do you have any ETA on, uh, when they're gonna pour that?
Uh, I could send him a, uh, you know, and ask. It should be, I mean, coming up here pretty quick. It's nice off of this, so I would think if, if they have served this week, probably next week.
Can you, could you check that and send me something like that?
Yeah.
Excuse me.
I know they were shooting for, uh, June first to have down here, and we have, uh, on like June first. I just got the permit for that. We all prepared to get my race, but it's not till, like, June twenty-fourth, I think. So we have to wait until.
And when's your race, Charlie? What?
The, the, the first race is June twenty-fourth.
Bless you.
And then there's another race in September.
Okay, the big race is in September.
Big race is September.
Okay, we'll be good there, but we do need to get that done in June, though. We really should.
Okay. That's all I have. Most of my meetings are canceled. We couldn't get a quorum together on them, so I don't have a whole lot to report. Nothing actually. Uh, staff, anybody?
We have a personnel board meeting, April twenty-seventh.
Okay.
And we put out the agenda and some of the topics.
Sheriff, you have anything?
I did not have it.
Steve?
Um, I got our name on two snowboards. When we get in, we'll look at it when we get in.
Very good. Hopefully, we won't need them until about next October or November.
Well, they give us a chance to learn how to operate them and work on them.
There you go.
Clean them up a little bit.
Kelly, do you have anything?
I do not.
Uh, anything on legislation? All right, if not, we're adjourned. One hour and one minute.
That's a world record.
No, 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 we've got, we've got.
Fifteen minutes, world record.